And if the chairman isn't here and the vice chairman is in there, I get to be in charge. Whee! So, let's at least establish the quorum. Bob, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? A member tonight, or not be a member?
Sure. Who's gonna be a member?
Maria Ruma.
Oh, okay. Sure.
Yeah, we need the non-.
I second it.
Okay. I'll second. Yeah. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Bob, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
No, I want to call up Gil and Bob.
Oh, okay. We're in. Before getting in, you just sort of just feel what you're doing. Is there any public here?
Oh, hang on. Gil's waiting to get in.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Gil is here.
Good.
There's a Noreen on.
That's Noreen Farnor, probably. We're waiting for Gil. He's connected.
Yep.
Gil, you there?
Yeah, I'm trying to get in.
I hear ya.
You're in.
We hear ya.
How about video?
We are up to the Pledge of Allegiance. You can take over.
Have you done, have you done the Pledge of Allegiance?
No, we're up to that.
Okay, I'll lead. Is Robert there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Bob, do you have your flag or you want to just stand up and pledge?
I don't have a flag.
Oh, I thought it was Bob, Bob like, anyway.
No, Bob likes isn't here. Have you heard from?
Okay, I'm, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm gonna lead. Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag.
Of the United States.
United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Justice for all. Thank you. Jim, you started the meeting and took the.
Well, all we did, Gil, was establish the quorum, which put Marie on so she can vote and be part of the commission tonight.
Okay, thank you. I had a.
Yep.
I have a plumbing problem here at home, so I, so I'm a little late and, uh, just in case, Jim, if, if you would, would you continue as, uh, running the meeting? In case I have to run away.
No problem, Gil. Okay, public, public participation? Going once? Going twice?
Bob like. Uh, this is Bob Maynard. We have a, a EDC meeting tonight.
Three times.
I just got a text message from Bob like. Says, "I'm very busy with some personal issues."
Oh, okay.
All right.
Now, let's move on. All right, everybody with us? Okay. Approval of the minutes and we need a motion. Bob Maynard, you're on mute.
I move we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Gil. I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay. Minutes are approved. Review and approval of bylaws. Everyone got the packets?
Yes.
Yes.
Did anyone want to add or discuss it any further?
No.
Gil, you're all set? Gil, you're on mute.
Yes, affirmative. I'm all set with, with the changes and review them. It's fine.
Okay. Maria?
Yeah, all set. Thank you.
Okay. Someone want to entertain a motion to approve the bylaws as presented?
This is Gil. I'll move to, uh, accept the bylaws and approve the bylaws as presented with all the changes.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Maria? Okay, bylaws are approved. Okay, next thing. General discussion. The, uh, virtual workshop of Connecticut 90 minute. Ruth, did you want to talk about that?
Yes, I wanted to just kind of pull, have you guys talk through whether virtual or in-person would be your preference? Uh, if it's virtual after hours, the group that puts these workshops on are available anytime, um, we decide we'd like to have it. And then as far as in-person, I guess that's, you know, would be later, a later date for such a workshop. So I wanted to just have, have you deliberate and let me know which way you'd like to go.
This is Gil. Uh, Ruth, I think, uh, at this time, virtual, uh, would get probably more people to, uh, to attend, uh. You know, it's still, still, there's a question of where, where can you have it first and when? So I think, uh, virtual's fine for me. Just, just my opinion.
Who, who, Ruth, who, who's gonna attend this?
So, once we get a date, we can get flyers together and my intention is to, um, invite the different commissions through the town, the different groups, to participate. And if there are people within the business community that would like to attend, they're welcome to. I think now if we go virtual, then we have a lot of seats we could fill, um, more easily.
Okay. Thank you. Virtual is fine with me.
Maria?
Um, it would depend on if it's during the day, um, because I do work, so I need to be able to make sure I could attend it. So I'm tentative.
They did say they can do evenings, which I thought would make sense since most of the participants have full-time jobs.
I agree. Is that, is it the wait and see, Ruth, till, uh, you get flyers out, see how many people want to participate?
Yeah, if we could pick it, if we could pick, uh, a couple of dates and times and then we could put the flyer together and.
Will we ask one question?
Absolutely.
The farther out we are, the more we can promote it. So are they talking next week? Or two months down the road or?
I, that's up to the, the commission, when you want to have it. They've made themselves available for when we decide. So there's no quick, there's no urgency on, you know, they're not pressing for something soon. They'll do it soon if we ask for it, but, um, yeah, it's really your preference.
How about if we pick a date two months down the road? Would that be enough? Or too little or too much? And what's everyone think?
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, it sounds good to me as well. Uh, probably just before the, uh, Memorial Day holiday.
Yeah.
And, and also what day of the week is, is, uh, you have to look at what other commissions when they're, when they're, they're meeting, I would imagine. So availability for that.
Would it make sense to do it during this meeting's time slot?
I agree. Yeah.
Oh, use the EDC time slot.
Yeah, if you're, if you're open to that.
That would make sense.
That would be good.
Okay.
I mean, if, if we have some business we needed to conduct, we could call a special meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Make that a big deal.
Okay. I will take that back with me. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Hearing none? Next is plan of conservation and development information. Uh, I can't talk to my working group. And I saw Ruth had been in front of the Board of Selectmen discussing this matter. And luckily, our group has been an impetus to, uh, get us going on these things.
Yeah, I, I say where these great brainstorms come from, right? So, the idea is, um, the number one action item that is listed in the 90 some odd action items in the Plan of Conservation and Development is to commence an implementation committee to keep things on track. And, uh, I spoke with the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Selectmen. Clark Chapin spoke with the Conservation Commission. And so we're seeking out, um, representation for the implementation committee. Um, Joe Olet has volunteered. Alan Baker has volunteered. So Conservation Commission is still considering. And so I posed that, um, to EDC as well, to be part of the implementation group when it, when it's up and running.
Now, from that Board of Selectmen's meeting, I remember Bob like had expressed an interest. So I think he should probably be our liaison unless someone else wanted to do it to that group. Hearing nobody else volunteer. Were we all in the military or something?
I think Bob likes the perfect, uh, perfect choice. Uh, usually the person that's, that's not in attendance gets the, uh, gets to volunteer.
That's right. Ruth?
Yes.
Um, has WPCA been approached to be involved in this?
No.
Okay. Uh, would you make sure we reach out to Paul Anderson?
Paul Anderson.
If he can't do it, I'll step in from there.
Okay. I will do that.
Okay. Any more discussion? Gil, did you have something?
I'm fine. I'm fine with that.
All right. Uh, next thing is EDC webpage. Where are we at? Are we still in limbo or, I mean, anything to report?
Are we talking about the EDC website or the EDC webpage?
I believe it's the same.
Yes.
There's a page on the ED, on the, um, East Windsor, uh, website that's devoted to the EDC.
Okay.
So if, if we're not talking about that page, then, um, we can talk about the EDC website that we were talking about a year ago.
That's the one.
Yes. Yeah, that's the one we're.
Okay, um, where we left off last year was ready to implement and we were looking at it. Um, I sent Jason an email in, uh, July. In fact, I, I called him and he replied that, uh, before we implemented, he wanted to have the, uh, Director of, uh, Planning and Development. And, uh, now we have Clark. So he wanted Clark to be on board. Um, and I suppose Ruth too. And, uh, so, uh, I guess the next step would be to talk to Clark and demonstrate it to him.
Um. Yep, that's what I understand from Clark. Um, I know that there was some email exchange and, um, we're kind of waiting on a date.
Yeah, I'm, I've been vaccinated, so that's good. So I don't, I don't think I'm contagious. So if I could come in, I think that would be a good, good start. And then just show you what we have, um, and, and listen to some ideas and, uh, we could have, we could have a discussion. I suppose another way to do it would be Zoom if, if, uh, uh, I could share screens. Uh, that might work.
Yeah. Uh, let us know what days work best for you.
Um, well, uh, Tuesdays are bad. Or some Tuesdays anyway, but, um, uh, other than that, uh, so, yeah, I, I can, I'll, I'll send you a list of dates and we can, since I'm retired, we can, uh, do it during the day. So, uh, I'll give you some days and you can choose a time that's good for you and Clark.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right. Any further discussion? Very good. Um, EDC budget. Do we know what we have?
This is Gil.
I honestly didn't look this month. I've been tied up.
Yeah, okay. We haven't, we haven't spent any money.
So we have our entire budget still.
That's, that's.
Whatever it was.
That's correct.
Oh, cool. All right. Any further discussion on the budget? And I'll try to have numbers next month. Sorry about that, folks.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, somebody want to say something?
No, I just says thank you for following up on the budget for next month meeting.
Yeah, you know, my, I just got caught up in some things. I retired from real estate this last month, so I had to close some deals. Uh, promotions for local businesses. All right. We discussed, um, we could do advertising, we could run a campaign. What does everyone think?
Uh, go ahead, Bob.
Well, I was just saying, what, what are we talking about?
Well, as we discussed, it was in the minutes, run and say, I need out East Windsor campaign, something along that line. I mean, we're just, if you have a good idea, let, let's examine it, maybe do it. I mean.
Idea for what? What, what kind of idea?
It's to promote local businesses, uh, Bob.
To promote local businesses?
Yes, like for advertising or, uh, I, I read a good piece on the new pizza shop, uh, that opened up in Broadbrook, uh, get word out like that, uh, I would imagine. There's, there's a, a program that him had, uh, it was more like a chamber kind of program. He, uh, he talked about, uh, raffling off your receipts from restaurants. That's something that, looking into further, but I thought that was more like chamber, but.
Well, it, it was the cost involved with it. The last time the cost was absorbed by business. On EDC, you know, if we want to, we can do it. If not, that's fine. We can do something else. Uh, maybe run an ad campaign. I mean, just let's pick a direction.
And that's for what?
Shop local, shop East Windsor, shop your retail, shop your restaurants.
Fix your car.
Whatever you want to tailor it to.
Okay, um, I, I haven't been involved in EDC for a while and I, I agree that promoting local businesses are, are part of, uh, economic development. We'd also, another phase of economic development is trying to bring new businesses into town. And, uh, that would increase our, our, uh, revenue, tax revenue. So that is another area I'd like to, to consider.
Right. We've been, we've actually been discussing that. We're targeting this tonight because it's been brought up for several months. In the plan of conservation and development, what you're talking about is one of our action items. So I'm not disagreeing with you. This is a, we're, we're discussing this matter because we've been discussing it. And we're trying to see if we're gonna do anything or not. I mean, it's up to you all. It is a commission we all vote on. But, I mean, we're trying to, we've got local businesses that are hurting. Uh, Golden Irene, she's still doing curbside. I mean, you gotta see what each business is doing. Some are, some are doing fine, others aren't.
Okay, um, so, uh, now, Gil, and I, and I did read in the, the minutes that one suggestion was to have some kind of a, a raffle where you turn in receipts?
But that's what we're talking about. And it's not a raffle. What you do is you promote all, with March opening in Broadbrook Pizza, we should be at 29 different restaurants in town. We promoted the 29 restaurants. The people sent in their receipt from the restaurant. Could be a Dunkin', could be main fish market. And after a certain period of time, the receipts are all separated out, numbered, and there was a drawing. Now, the prizes, the first one was a TV, which businesses bought. And then the restaurants actually started kicking in gift cards. So we had many different things given away out of that. And I forget, what did I say? We had over 600 entries?
Wow, okay.
And that ran for a month, month, two months? And yet, like, if we were to decide to do it today, we want lead time of the start. So we'd be looking at like April 15th, April 20th. And we could run it through June.
Okay, so my understanding of what you just said was that people send receipts to you? Or to what?
Whoever's handling, taking them in, yeah.
So they could send it to the town clerk?
Well, I wouldn't send it to town clerk. I'd send it to planning and zoning office.
Planning and zoning.
Believe me, I, I, what I had to do to put that all together by myself, like someone else? Because you can answer more than one spot. You can send in 20 receipts at a time.
Um, you did it for restaurants. Would, would you do it for other businesses in town?
Well, with restaurants, you're taking a segment of the market that's really hard hit. And also you're, if we start just doing the whole town, we just say all the businesses. When you target the restaurant, you'll, you could target all 29. We advertise all 29, promote all 29. And if you talk to the other businesses that, in the community, none seemed to think anybody was doing anything wrong. And actually, it wasn't just the chamber. I worked with Jason Bowza so that we could include the town. And that way, whether they were chamber member restaurants or regular just restaurants, not chamber members, they still got promotion. Matter of fact, the last year and a half, for nine months of it, the chamber was promoting every business in town. And, and, and in the region. Because every business, we all got to stand together as a community, whether we're chamber members or not. And that's why I was trying to get the EDC involved, so that we could be leaders in bringing back the economics of, of what we've got. I mean, I know we have to get more, Bob, but what we got, we gotta keep.
Um.
She's awesome. Yeah. Jimbo? How many, how many restaurants do we have? I don't mean chamber restaurant, just restaurants?
29.
Okay.
Uh, four Dunkin'. I don't include them. I call it one for Dunkin'. And then with March Tavern opening and this Broadbrook Pizza opening, I have 29 count right now.
Jim, are you including the new place that's going into Friendly's? It's gonna be like a, a pickup?
Yeah, I've tried. Somebody said that with Shayso Red Zap, and I reached out to them and I haven't heard back yet.
I, um, I like this idea. I, I think social, this is my two cents. I think social media is the best place because I think that's where most people are going. I also think the Village Voice, that newsletter that comes out to everyone's home. I don't know how much it would cost to advertise in that, but that might be good. Um.
Well, we can get, we can get, certainly, we do this in combination with the chamber, which allows me to go to the chamber members. We'd say we need some support of this. We get write-ups. Uh, I, as publicity guy, will handle it just like we did the last one. We use social media to the maximum and any of our printed outlets that we can do.
Can we, can we use, uh, the town website and Facebook and, uh, notices?
I would think so. Right now, I'm sharing like the five Village Voice that just came out. They're sending me the PDF now because we put it on the chamber website and then we put it out to the social media outlets. So we're already doing things along that line.
What are we looking for, for funding?
More about electronics. Last time it cost us less than 500 to purchase a TV. And that's, whoever wants to handle that, I'm not good at it. So my chamber board figured out what TV. I think it was a 55 inch. I could certainly look it up and get it to everybody. Because it certainly was well promoted. We made up a flyer. It said, uh, presented by the cha, town, chamber, and then the sponsoring businesses which bought the TV. Windsor Federal. Oh, who else was there? Oh, I'm gonna get in trouble. Old age settlement. Um, so I mean, in this case, it would be sponsored by the Town Economic Development Commission.
Okay, Bob, uh, Jimbo, I have, uh, let's see, one, two, three. I have four TVs here. I don't know if, if TV is, is the price that everyone would be looking for, or, or maybe a 21-speed bicycle or, or other items, but, uh, and then again.
Well, we pay the TV because it is a general thing. We had one family. We got a bunch of receipts from them. They were in competition to who was gonna win the darn thing. I mean, it became fun.
My bad. Okay. There's, there's only three TVs, as a matter of fact.
I got two in my house, Gil.
How about a gift certificate to Walmart?
Yeah.
We, we got it from Walmart.
Well, I meant, we could work with them, maybe.
That's right.
If, if you want to approach Walmart and get it, Bob, I'm, I'm all for it. The guy that I knew is gone. Um, the original manager. He's been gone about a half a year to a year now.
Yeah, I, I.
Certainly, someone take charge of it.
Yeah, I was gonna, I think we might have to give him some money too, maybe 50/50 or something.
Well, what we could do as a, as a commission and, and let Bob Maynard handle it, is, if you don't mind, Bob, is I think I'll authorize him up to 500. Doesn't mean we have to spend it, but we would be earmarking it.
I.
How about, Bob, you, uh, you, you find out how much that a TV would be and how much we'd have to pay before we, we vote on getting a, a dollar, a dollar amount out. And also, how do we get money for, for this? I know that, uh, in the past, we had, we had earmarked money for our webpage, uh, but that went on for a year and a half. No fault of yours, Bob Maynard, but it went on a while and, uh, we haven't spent any money, so.
Well, I think, I think though we have to give Bob Maynard some negotiating. Other words, I, we just did this four months ago. Other words, I, we just did this four months ago. And the cost, Steve Smith picked it up. It was under 400. And it was a 55-inch, had all the bells and whistles. You know, I, I, Raku, I don't know all of them. So, I mean, that's what I'm trying to do. So when Bob goes and talks to these guys and let's say Walmart says, you know what, we got a $700 model. Bob Maynard could say, well, I'm authorized up to 500. I know I can say yes. I mean, we, we've gotta give them some authority on that.
Okay, my question would be, uh, if, how are we, how are we supposed to spend the money that we have in the budget for something like this or something for, or what else?
Well, whatever you want. I mean, if you'd rather spend it on advertising, I'm, I'm for that too. I mean.
Um, the, the, you, the money in the budget, um, that budget's good until, uh, the end of June. Is that correct? So.
Yeah.
So I guess we should spend it or lose it, so, so to speak.
Right, and if we earmark it, it doesn't revert back because we've earmarked it. We could say we're taking it out.
Okay, uh, and you're, and you're talking, uh, to earmark $500, Jimbo?
Yeah, 500, because if we do it on our own, we shouldn't spend over that. But Walmart, if Bob walks in there and they say, oh, we got a $700 model, Bob knows, well, I spend 350 and say, shake hands and make a deal.
Okay, Jim, if, this is Gil. Uh, if you, uh, if we do that, we also would want some money for, uh, for notifications, we, you know, for advertising or, so 500 for that. And if it's in our budget, uh, we, if we are allowed to spend money for, uh, promoting local businesses, so we should.
Let's separate the motion. Maybe we should make a motion first to spend on the TV. That way we know we're doing the program. Because that's the cost.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to earmark $500 out of the, the economic development budget uh, for, for the promotion of local businesses.
Authorizing Bob Maynard to make that decision. I'll second it.
As stated, yes.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, we have a.
There are none, all in favor?
I have a, aye.
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 Any opposition? Great. Now, real quick, because we wanna get to the mechanics and we can come back to the advertising as part of the mechanics. Do we want the staff at Planning and Zoning to handle receipt of the receipts, or do you want the chamber to handle it?
I would, I would say, since you've done it before, uh, you'd have the chamber do it. And, and how would people, do they mail them in, drop them off?
Mail it into our P O box.
I'd say.
I'm just making a list of what I need to do, so.
Yeah, a, a co- a combination of both, depending on.
Well, you'll confuse people. It should be one or the other.
Well, then we'd have to get the authorization from, uh, the Planning and Zoning departments.
Okay, what if we, we're not gonna start till, say, April 20th? Is that sound good to everybody?
Uh, no, I, I, I'm going to Denver this month and I, and so I'm not gonna be around, so maybe, may, I know you authorize me, but I'm not gonna start anything until May, so, uh, maybe, maybe.
May I, may I interrupt? I'm, I'm gonna agree with our, uh, ju- just as, just to get it going, uh, May, it may as good, our next May meeting would be a good time for, for that. I, I don't know when the, uh, when we're gonna have them, the HERC fundamentals of economic development. I know we're gonna have the D E D A S or. If Bob's going away, Bob, when will you have time to, to go into Walmart?
Um, I'd like to say May. I, May is the one I could do it.
Okay, I, and you know, if you say May, maybe things will loosen up a little more for, uh, people going into restaurants, uh, after May, so.
Well, we could start at May 15th and we could start promoting it prior, say, a grand prize to be announced. I mean, we don't have to commit to that. Let people know it's coming. So would May 15th be close enough, Bob? I mean, would you be able to be by the 20th, 25th?
Um, okay, well, I'll go talk to, to them at Walmart. That's, I don't, not saying I'm gonna get anything, but I'm gonna talk to them.
Okay.
Well, and, and if Walmart isn't agreeable, take a look at what Walmart offers because you've been authorized up to 500 and whatever you think is best. I mean, you know about these things. I don't.
I don't, I don't.
Now, if Bob's offer au- authorized for 500, he finds the deal, then he goes into the, uh, treasures op, they cut me a check? Is that what's happening?
Well, no, we don't even have to do that yet. Because when we offer the grand prize, we say 55-inch blah, 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 or similar. And we've covered ourselves. We're not charging. We're not, you know, it's open to everybody as many times as they wanna enter. No one's gonna complain if it's a little bit different than what we thought we might have. So I mean, if Bob wants to look ahead and, and sees what he thinks would be good, and it's under 500, then he can go right, you know, we know, he knows he can say yes, and then he can negotiate with Walmart as he goes to buy it. I mean, you know, it's all if Walmart wants to be part of the promotion. But we can put that aspect off if we start, say, May 15th and announce it, the program starts May 15th with a great grand prize to be announced. It's not costing anybody anything and it's not putting us on the hook, but it might get some of the restaurants to donate some cards. And in the meantime, we can start promoting the restaurant.
Okay, getting to promoting, uh, there's gonna be a, a cost to promoting advertising. Uh, we need a motion, uh, and then you don't know a dollar amount for advertising, so.
Well, for advertising, I can, I can look into the different newspapers. North Central, J I, Current. We wouldn't have to solidify newspaper ads till after our May meeting. Otherwise, that night in May, I could certainly get some ad costs and see if I could maybe get, say, a J I sponsorship of advertising.
Okay. The rest is social media. Okay, Jim, thank, thank you.
Now, we're back to, um, where we're sending it.
Well, authorization must be obtained if you're gonna use, uh, Amanda.
Oh, that's what it was. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to keep all the things and I had that on the list. Okay, um, so let's, we could leave that alone for a minute.
Yes.
We could do the same thing. Ruth could check and see where, what would be best, whether it's come to the chamber or to the town and let me know.
Okay.
And then I'll hold off promoting anything till I get that answer.
Okay.
That sound good to everybody?
Sounds good to me, Gil.
Yeah.
Bob?
Um, I'm, I'm gonna go along with this. I think it's kinda sudden. It's, we haven't planned it. We don't know really what, I don't know what we're doing, but I think in, in marketing, it's nice to help, uh, businesses and, and we picked out a subset of the businesses we wanna help, 29 restaurants. Um, and, and with advertising, I, I don't know if, if we're promote, we, we are promoting certainly, well, Chamber of Commerce, that's, that's true, and I'd like to promote the, uh, EDC also. Uh, I don't know if, I think that we should start to think about making a name for ourself too, that, that.
Right.
We're, we're a, a force in the, in the, uh, economic development, so, uh, I'll go along with it.
Yeah, the EDC will be up there under town and, and, and people will realize the EDC is sponsoring. Other words, the town and the chamber are assisting the EDC, which means you have a good working relationship.
And I think the town should be part of it too. Obviously, the town should get credit for spending money to promote businesses as.
Well, they were last time.
So you can say, you know, in conjunction with and, and, uh, so we'll.
Yeah, the last time we did it, the town was the lead. The chamber just sponsored it because it wasn't time to meet, et cetera. We had businesses step up with 100 bucks here, 100 bucks there. If you look for the flyer, it's probably still floating around on Facebook. Um, and you could see that this is really about promoting the town of East Windsor that were open for business. And the last time we used just a town, but this time what it would be is the town of East Windsor and East Windsor Chamber present, and then it would say sponsored by the Economic Development Commission, by ourselves. And then if some restaurants kick in, they would be restaurants, cards donated by such, such, and such. So I mean, really, we should, this should make us step out there.
That's good.
You know, it, it should do what you're looking for, Bob. And, and it goes not just on, uh, Facebook, uh, but I'm, like myself, I'm a monster on like LinkedIn. And on LinkedIn, it's connecting to what Bob Maynard referred to, which was people outside of the local sphere. I mean, uh, Patrick McMahon, for instance, is friends with me on LinkedIn. And I see all the stuff that Connecticut Downtown is doing and his group and so on. And then, uh, we also put it out there, this is not open just to residents, but to people in other towns, which we do promote it out there. So it, it, it should be good for everybody involved. It, it was last time for everybody involved.
Okay.
Okay, and you know, uh, flyers can go out too, uh, as, as we get further into this, you know, uh, so people will know that, you know, big things doing in these, in these Windsor restaurants, uh, grand prize to be announced, stuff like, you know, just little flyers, uh, at, at some cost. So, and we don't have, uh, a whole lot of time before we.
Well, the flyers, what I try to do is connect with all the restaurants on Facebook. And I know that 18 of the 27 last time responded that they got it, whether they did anything with it or not. That's their decision. Now, hopefully, I can get ahold of Joe from the J I and get a write-up saying it's coming again. Boom, boom, boom. I mean, this is the second time.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I'm, I'm good.
Under general discussion updates, that was our last item. But I do open the floor if anybody else had anything they wanted to discuss.
Now, as I mentioned earlier, I got a little situation I'm dealing with at home, so, uh, if you, uh, if you could finish it off, uh, Jim and adjourn when you have to. I have to, I have to sign out now.
I think we're almost all set.
Yeah, I, I moved to adjourn.
Okay, Maria?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, but, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Bye, I'll be in touch.
Okay, thanks.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you, Jim, and thank you, Rose.
You're welcome. Hi.
I'm leaving, I'm leaving. Bye.